Well, I would like to call the meeting to the letter. You are being televised.
Yes.
Recorded.
Recorded.
This isn't live improv TV, you know, kids.
The revolution will be televised.
Yeah, exactly. Because we don't have an airplane.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you want to look first at the June 10th meeting minutes.
Okay, so there's no open forum here.
Well, there's nobody here in the car.
No open forum.
Well, I just have to...
Oh, no, I understand.
Now to June 10th and July 24th.
Yeah. Thank you.
Hi, Kim.
Kim, if you would like to sit at the table, you're certainly welcome to.
We want you on camera. Edit that.
I was gonna say, she's just back from the meeting. She should look rested.
Well, she looks keen.
And she looks happy.
There is nobody present at current time for the open forum. So if all would prefer please to the June 10 minutes, the meeting minutes. Has everybody had the opportunity to read them? Are there any comments, changes?
On the June 10th minutes?
June 10th.
The page three, talking about the circuit breaker. It's a technicality. I would add the word refundable.
Where, where on?
On June 10th. Minutes on page three.
Second paragraph.
Second paragraph. If qualified, it will appear as a credit to your taxes. It's a refundable credit. In other words, if you have more circuit breaker than you have taxes, you'll get the difference back.
Are we halfway that way?
No, second paragraph, end of the second.
Right. This is where it just hurt my...
No, we were...
Page three, second paragraph.
Where it was supposed to... Oh, at the end. It's all right, I found what I need.
When you hear of the credit to your taxes.
It's a refundable credit.
You add the word refundable?
Yes.
Yes.
John, there's... Did you check your mailbox? I have.
I did not.
Well, there's... No, Kim, I got them.
Oh.
I have another set of meeting minutes.
Thank you.
Looks good.
Everything else looks almost good. Any other corrections that need to be addressed? It's not... May I have a motion moved to accept the minutes until June 10th and the minute? I say, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now we're gonna move right along to July 24th. Again, I'm hoping that everybody has had an opportunity to read them. This was a special meeting that was held at the town hall. The discussion was basically on the new proposed senior center.
On page three, where it says my name. Just the thing I referenced, and you had Marlborough, it was Northbrook. Yeah. Because they have the cafe. I probably mentioned Marlborough, but then I said Northbrook. Okay.
You started Northbrook and then it was Marlborough.
No. That's all.
Okay, so Northbrook and Southmore.
Did any of you notice that when we sent this, that we traveled and looked at, that two of them had adults, special needs people working? And they were doing a wonderful job. And in the future, that would be something I would like to see.
Well, we... Prior to her leaving, I had talked to Amber about... Amber Bach, about doing a training program at the senior center in the cafe, like the Sugar Shack kind of thing. And she thought that was wonderful. And I since had a conversation, a very brief conversation, in front of the fire station with the new superintendent. And she's very interested in that too. So she and I are gonna get together sometime, once we all get back from vacations, and talk about that. So...
Couple of them were not still in school. They were adults, or always 18.
I think, I think the schools have to, till they're 22 or 23.
Oh, okay.
But there are other programs beyond that.
Page three, I don't know.
Are there any...
You must get tired by that point, then catch your second minute to go through four, five, and six.
I know, it's only six pages. Are there any questions or comments that anybody would like to bring forward? Move to accept the minutes of July 24th as a minute.
A second to page four. Right. Twenty-four, what did I say?
Twenty-first.
Oh, twenty-four. That's okay, you have only a few days off.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome aboard, John. We're happy to have you. Okay, and I'll bring it up to today's agenda. First item is transportation recommendations. And next...
I have all the information that you all have put together. And I know that we had talked about doing some kind of a flyer or something. I need to talk to the town planer. I didn't have a chance to do that when I got back from my meeting this morning. Because apparently Central Mass Regional Planning slash WRTA are working on doing another transportation study for that town. So I wanna get some more information about that and how they're gonna do that and what they're specifically looking at. So if we can table that until next month. And then Guido over here too, because he worked on some of that with you and Bob and Diane and Nancy. So if we can just put a pin in it, as they say, and try to get next month.
Apparently some programs that I have attended have been wonderful.
If you haven't been here this summer to do anything, you've surely missed some good times.
Good times, absolutely.
We've had... We've got two more Tuesday nights left. I hate doing that, because as soon as I get up there the first week in July, I know it's gonna be like gone. Tomorrow night's square dancing and pancakes and cereal. And next week is Elvis. So it should be... And then it's Labor Day. So I don't know when that happens. But yeah, so no, we've had a good crowd. We've had between 60 and 100 people every Tuesday night. Everybody seems to have a good time, even the week that our entertainment sort of forgot about us. We were very fortunate to have Dennis Fenton and Jim Duncan sort of pitch it for us. Everybody left happy, so that was all I really was concerned about. I have had an offer from that gentleman to do a free show for us at some point in time. So I'm trying to figure out when we can do that for something interesting to do. He felt very, very badly. We had 16 that went to the baseball game in July. We had, I think, eight or 10 that went to the clock museum. We had Tammy's couple trips she's taken have been pretty much full. I did find out that we have a lot of ice cream monsters that love to take those trips with her. So they found all the best ice cream places in Worcester County. So at this point, the clay bake trip for Thursday is full. It sold out within about a week. I called in the comp this morning, so we'll have... They'll be ready for us Thursday morning. So I think that it's, you know, it's been a really good summer. And people have, you know, told me and the staff a lot how much they've really enjoyed it and how much, you know, it's something they look forward to on Tuesday night. So I'm glad we started that 10 years ago.
I think many of us would agree with that statement.
Yeah, the cookout last week with the fire department was a lot of fun. I tease them, I say, "So we gotta teach you guys how to get from a hamburger being raw to a hockey puck." Like, there's somewhere in the middle there that you need to stop.
And the hockey puck.
And at one point, I went out and they were all cooking.
Together to the work.
I said, "Oh, so I'm gonna go in and tell them that the Westboro Fire Department Men's Course will be in in about 15 minutes to entertain." And they all turned around, looked at me like, "What's she talking about?" I was like, "Come on, you guys."
And the youngsters that were serving.
Oh, the kids were wonderful.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I think the chief's twins, and then two of their friends were here helping out. It was nice to see a couple female firefighters. Keith's wife was here. She hasn't been able to come in the past because of her work schedule, but she came. Yeah, so it was, it was a good day. Everybody was happy, everybody was well, well-fed, sort of. And yeah.
I'll put one vote in for hockey puck.
Well, see, I'm more on the rare side here. Yeah, so... So tomorrow night is pancakes and sausage, and you need to bring a couple boxes of cereal or a box of cereal. And although everybody I've talked to, it's like, and I bought two boxes. Fruit Loop seems to be in the, in the lead right now for the cereal everybody's buying. So it's gonna be a lot of Fruit Loops at the food pantry by the end of the week. And then the following week, it's pulled pork. And like I said at the, that day, we were gonna try to figure out how to do peanut butter and banana, but I wasn't sure, because that was Elvis's favorite sandwich. I'm like, no. So, so pulled pork's on its own. Everyone's, you know, Tennessee barbecue. So that's what we're gonna be doing. So it should be a lot of fun. And I've heard from several people that the Elvis that is coming is like top shelf. So it should be fun. No.
Oh.
This meal comes from somewhere in Rhode Island, Patagonia or Providence, somewhere. Not true for everything, so it should be fun.
It should be. You know, if you don't participate and sit like above on the log, stay home.
I mean, you know what? The reality is, and we've talked about this at conferences, we've talked about this at directors' meetings, there are some people who are never going to set foot in this building, no matter what, because they don't wanna hang out with all those old people. Which, like, well...
I don't think we're too old.
It sure beats the option.
We're never too old.
Yeah. Yeah, and then I, you know, I look at the Zumba class, and I'm like, "I wish I could do that." Yeah, I mean, I, you know, there's just some people that aren't ever gonna do it. But we, every day we get more phone calls. Every day Kristen registers more people. Every day we get more. I think we've got almost 1,500 tags out there right now.
Wow. Oh, that's awesome. That is... You're never gonna change the people who don't wanna come. And we have enough people who do participate and enjoy, and that's what we work for.
Yeah, I mean, I...
Can't worry about the other...
I can't force them to come in here, but they know we're here. And they know if they need help, they can call us. I mean, we've had some people that we've helped out with different issues, housing and whatever. They, they don't come for anything else. But they know we're here to help them with those specific things. So that makes everybody happy. So it's all good. Yeah, it's all good. But if you walk in the door, Kristen's gonna get you, and you're gonna get registered, and you're gonna get... And now the bus drivers too are... They check people in with their tags, the tags for the thing. And they just taught the three drivers, four drivers, how to download their own information off the clicker. So they come in every afternoon and do that. So the statistics for the bus are much more accurate now, so...
Is there a name to that program to call?
My Senior Center, one word, capital letters.
My Senior Center.
My Senior is a capital and Center, yeah, yeah. M is capital, S is capital, C is capital, but it's all one word.
So S is capital.
Yeah. Anyway, so it's been a good summer, and I can't even...
I'm coming for Elvis.
Huh?
I'm coming for Elvis.
You're coming for Elvis? I, I, a lot of people are coming for Elvis. I think there's already like 70-some on the list, so, yeah. Did you register yet?
Oh, I did right away.
Oh.
And the food pantry, very much appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, I mean, they... I think we, I don't think we've ever sent less than 80 to 100 boxes of the cereal up there for them. And it's right before it's gonna start, so it's a good thing.
It was also called tonight attention a couple of weeks ago, that if you have an abundance of brown paper grocery bags, don't hold them away, please. Bring them to the food pantry or bring them to your church. Bring them to wherever you drop off.
And if you wanna bring them here, Paul's here in the building at least, you know, once every week or so. So we can always fill up his cart with paper bags.
Okay. Any other comments on the summer programs? Shall we move right on to the new business of community center updates?
You wanna do this, Kim, or you wanna tag team it?
I can tag team it. It's part of the meeting, so go for it.
So we've been meeting every Tuesday morning on, by Zoom, with the architect and the project manager and some of their people, Kim, Christie, me, Jen Kirkland. So we can try to keep up on all these things. There are some meetings coming up that you need to be aware of and that you need to be in attendance, if you can be. On Thursday evening, August 29th at 6 o'clock, there'll be a meeting with the Board of Selectment at the town hall. I totally blanked on that. Oh, the architect's gonna present his renderings for the board to take a look at. And then on Monday, September 9th, from 6 to 8, there'll be a community center charrette. I'm not sure if it's gonna be at the town hall yet or in the great hall of the building, but I'll let you know. I've got drivers for both those nights, so if you're not crazy about driving, because it'll be dark by then at 7 o'clock.
Oh, that's right.
I know. Let me know, because we have a driver.
What time?
It's 6 to 8. But then on Tuesday afternoon at 2 o'clock, there's gonna be a meeting here to discuss the outcome or the results from the charrette for the seniors that make it have a little input.
Date on that?
September 10th.
And what time?
2 o'clock.
2 o'clock. So the 9th is 6 to 8.
Yep.
Somewhere.
Forbes, right now it's scheduled for Forbes. I mean, that's a good feeling.
Okay, so it's upstairs in the police station, so...
And what was the 29th, the time?
6 o'clock.
So that's the results of the survey?
Well, it's, it's to talk about the charrette part with the seniors and maybe get some feedback from them. And, I mean, we're sort of winding down as to how much more feedback we are gonna be able to accept. There's another sort of flood of surveys that'll be out there shortly for some housing places. Because on the 21st of October, which is a Monday night, that's a fall time meeting, and this will all come ready to take a vote, so...
I don't know which one it was, it's for...
A fall time meeting.
Oh.
The funding for this will be on the agenda.
So the work being done right now by the architect is to get us to a conceptual design and cost estimates for the construction of that, so that we can go to town meeting and seek funding for that next phase. So the next phase would be the more specific design work, bid documents, and construction. So the work done today, the architect has had a number of meetings. You all participated in the Council on Aging. There was a similar meeting with the Recreation Commission, separate meetings with Council on Aging staff, recreation staff, a broader stakeholder group with members from other boards and committees. And then there were three community meetings. Two of those were in person. One was held via Zoom for folks who couldn't attend. And then there's been some additional points of contact along the way. The purpose of all of those meetings was to get what they call the programmatic information, to understand what are the things we're trying to fit into the building? And specifically, what programs and services would be offered out of the space on both floors? From there, the architect is charged with developing three alternatives. And again, this is very high conceptual level. It's not getting into the nitty-gritty yet. Three alternatives, which, if you will, kind of a high, medium, and low really cost, based on the extent of the work, that would satisfy those programmatic requirements. That's the purpose of the special select board meeting on the 29th. We realized it would be tough to fit this into a regular meeting, so they're having a dedicated meeting just to talk, to hear from the architect, the findings of the survey, which we got about, it was over 1,000 responses to that survey, as well as the input from all of these meetings. Will culminate in the presentation of these three alternatives and a discussion about the preferred alternative, which will then be the subject of those subsequent meetings on the 9th and the 10th. And really, the charrette is just intended to be a more interactive discussion to react to specific, those specific designs. So far, it's all been discussion. While the architect did show some ideas from other community centers that they've, I'm sorry, community and senior centers that they've developed to help facilitate those conversations. They weren't providing a specific concept for our building. That's what they will do going forward, and then seek further refinement. So it's helpful if you're available. I know it's a lot of meetings, but if you're available and could attend the 29th, the 9th, and the 10th, I think there is value in you hearing and seeing the discussion and participating in the discussion in each of those, those opportunities.
So the August 29th meeting is a preliminary. After all the previous meetings have been held, bringing that together.
Yeah, that's bringing that together with three...
Renderings.
Yep.
And then September 9th at the Forbes Building, is that in preparation for a town, town meeting?
It's getting some more feedback after the presentation of those designs and potentially identifying what's the preferred alternative. The other piece that's going along with this, as they're developing these alternatives, there are three of them. They will each have different costs associated with them.
So those three alternatives are presented at town meeting?
Nope. We will pay one design to town meeting. So that's what this next set of meetings is. So here are three alternatives. Narrow it down. Yeah. We, we're calling it, and what we called it when we put this work out for the architect was to get to a preferred option. Understanding that even that preferred option will then, it's, it's a conceptual design. It's not gonna have the specific, this office will be this square footage, this multipurpose room will be this square footage. It will be a rendering at a conceptual level.
So after that 29th meeting, changes could still be made? Is that the implication?
Yeah, because we're still at the conceptual level. Things like, I mean, some of the big things that we expected, you know, decisions about how are the entrances laid out? Do we have two elevators? Do we, like, some of those bigger... Those are gonna be the more costly. And then the other design work will be, you know, they can show that based on what we've heard, programming for, you know, they'll list out the interests, and they'll show how it could fit into the space. But again, if you see something drawn on the plan, it's a concept. It doesn't mean that we know offices, you know, A, B, and C are actually gonna be located in that space. It's just really trying to demonstrate that if you wanna offer these programs and services, here's a plan in which they do fit into this space.
How is all this gonna be paid for? Is money already been put aside?
That's what we'll go to town meeting. And we'll, we'll identify funding sources when we, at the point at which we take it to town meeting.
That could be in our taxes, or you're hoping for...
There may be...
Other kinds of funding.
There may be other, yeah. That's, we're still working on that, and depending on the total cost. Some of it may be borne in the taxes. There may be other funding sources available as well. So we're not there yet. We're still working on refining, what are we looking at in terms of those three options? And obviously, we understand cost will be a factor. So that's specifically why we asked for, you know, this is the design that meets everything we've heard, but if it's cost prohibitive, here's a design that meets everything we've heard, just in a different way, that might be less expensive.
I wish I could go, but I'll be a couple of days post-op major surgery.
And just a reminder for anybody who wants to follow, the select board meetings are broadcast live, and they're recorded by our friends at Westboro TV. So certainly, if you can attend in person, all of the select board meetings are broadcast.
What channel is that?
28.
So it depends whether you have Verizon. It's on channel 28. 28. Or 28, or... It's also on 2124, which is a high-def channel, but definitely on channel 28.
And it's live at the time of the meeting?
Yes. Correct.
So which channel is it on, Spectrum? It's like 191, I think, isn't it?
192.
Is it 190?
Oh, I don't know, 191, 192, I'm not sure.
It's 192.
So the 9th and 10th meetings are both going to be at Forbes?
No, the 10th meeting's gonna be here.
Oh, okay.
We're working on a flyer that will make sure... We're working on a flyer that we'll make sure we get out, and I think that's the other piece of this. Once we have the flyer, I believe the information, if it's not already on the town's website, we have a dedicated spot for all of the community center information. We're going to ask for your assistance in getting the word out, because it's not the last opportunity for public input, but it is a critical point for public input. So to the extent that we can have some printed flyers, and you have places to deliver them to, houses of worship, you know, stores, places you shop, you know, friends you visit, we really would love to have, if not active participation, at least people following and hearing the conversation.
I'd like to think that we'll have those by the end of, or by the middle of this week. And then I fully intended to get ahold of you and Bob, and we'll get them out to housing at Fortune Hill, and just get some of them up in those places for sure, and, you know, or take them to church, or whatever you need to do, so. Yeah. And I've been announcing, you know, I announced it last week.
What times are Monday, the 21st? Are they always the same time?
Yes. Is it 7:00 P.M.?
What?
Town meeting, is it 7:00?
Yep, I believe it's 7:00.
Kim, if I follow you, there are going to be three propositions that are presented to the select persons. And then one proposal will come out of that. That will go to Town Meeting. And the funds that will be voted on will be for the purposes of developing that.
Further developing, yes.
And are there any plans beyond that?
It's, we'll be seeking funding for both the further design work as well as the construction. That's where this is then. So it'll be, the sum of money that we will be asking for at Town Meeting will be based on cost estimates, based on the conceptual design. They oftentimes will have a sense of a cost per square foot based on current building of similar structures of this type. And if there's a commercial kitchen, if there's, you know, multipurpose meeting space, office space, they'll typically say, if we're allocating X amount of the square footage to these purposes, here's the going rate per square foot, and they come up with their costs that way. They've also looked at just sort of basic maintenance and required work on the existing building. So they're looking at things like the existing HVAC, the roof, so any of those systems. So that's also being, you know, that's all part of this. Well, we didn't have the building from scratch, and don't have to address all of those systems. Given that the building's 20 years old, some of those things do need some maintenance, and we knew that when we purchased the building. So they're working those into the costs as well.
So, interesting question is, if it's not approved at Town Meeting, what's the alternative after that?
Um, I think, so I think one option is that we would need to refine the proposal.
The original proposal that went to Town Meeting?
Yeah. Because I think one of the things, you always have the option to, to look at it another way, and maybe only fit up a portion. The challenge there is oftentimes when you do things like that, your total cost over from start to finish of doing the work might be higher if you do it piecemeal, but it provides, you know, if we're bringing forward an option that shows complete fit-up of a senior center, some additional space, and some portion of fit-up upstairs, and for whatever reason it isn't approved, I think the option would be to go back to the drawing board and do less.
And that would therefore require an additional estimate?
Yes, yeah.
And that'd have to be raised at a special Town Meeting?
Right. Because we, our contract right now with the architectural firm is to get us to this preferred alternative and the cost estimates for that alternative.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I've seen the three drawings. One of them I liked a lot, one of them not so much, and the other one on the fence. So, I mean, there's options in there, and there's things to play with, so, yeah.
And those are still being refined?
Yeah, they are. But like I said, it's, that's not the final drawings, but like I said, one of them I liked better than the other two, but, you know, there's.
Is that the most expensive?
No, actually, it was not.
The middle one?
By nature, I'm a very simple girl, so, yeah, no, I mean, you know, it, you know, it had all the offices labeled, multipurpose room, the kitchen, I mean, all the things that we need, and then space for programs and music room and different things. So, I mean, they tried very hard to try to get us everything that we asked for within reason. And so now we just have to refine it, as Kim said, so.
And the flyers, can you also add channels that it's?
Yes.
Yeah. And I'll put that in the newsletter when I talk about the meeting, so that people can, at home. Because a lot of times people ask, and I, I know the Spectrum one, because that's what I have at home, but I didn't know the Verizon one, so. I do now, I wrote it down, so.
I have a question. So these are all going to be conceptual?
Yes.
And they're going to have a number associated with it?
Yes.
So when it gets to be the specific, are they allowing for a certain percentage of differential in price?
Yes.
Based on, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, would have to be. Any further discussion, questions? Shall we move along?
Sure.
Yes.
Mass Council's on Aging Annual Conference this year is October 23, 4, and 5. We're all home, which is lovely.
That's the stair.
Yeah. So we might need some help down with the phones, please. Are you good phone answering ladies?
Why those ladies?
Well, no, I mean, you know, the guys can come in and answer the phones too if they want to. I'm not.
Fussy.
No, I'm, you know, I'm into diversity, what?
Well, I was ringing out October 23, 25, and now we're into phone calls, so.
Oh, no, I said, because the staff will all be going, so this way, we won't be here in the office, but we'll all be available by phone.
Where is that?
Seacrest and Falmouth.
Oh, nice.
It's the same place that we get, right?
No.
Oh, different.
Well, yeah.
That's nice.
Where we go? I was going to say, I have an extra bed in my room, because the only place they had king-size beds was in the building itself, and I need to be on the first floor, so I don't know.
I'm going to love it. They just spent a fortune on renewing it again.
Yeah, they were working on that when we were there, two or three years ago. It's like, holy smoke.
This past year.
Yep. So, but it's coming, and everybody's excited, because the agenda looks really good this year. So we're working on it. We've been working on some, but I'll keep you posted as we go along. We're working on some new programs for the fall, but I will let you know that Breakfast with the Police will be back on the first Thursday of the month, which will be September 5th. We, we've lost our, we've lost Janine, our painting teacher, so we're looking for a new painting teacher. Classical Music will be back. He's been gone all summer. We have a wonderful new volunteer who came in to talk to Mary Ellen. He's an IT guy, and he's going to be here twice a month to help people get a little further into the weeds with their laptops and phones and stuff than the kids have time to do when they're here, the kids from Annisette.
Is that like once a month thing?
Yeah, he'll be here, actually, two Thursdays a month by appointment. We've scheduled the pre-retirement, the talk about, that I did in the spring, which I found is very successful, because the people that come are really happy, they knew the information. Blue Cross Blue Shield has done this program for us several times, and it's talking to people who are getting ready to retire, so they know what they need to do. It's not a sales meeting for Blue Cross Blue Shield. It's just like, this is the Medicare, this is the Medicare Advantage, this is Part A, Part B, all of that stuff, and explains it, has some great handouts. So if you know somebody in your family or neighbor that's thinking about retiring, that's going to be on September 19th. And it's in the evening, so it's, it's, you know, accessible for people that'll still work. And like I said, it's been very, it's been very successful in the past, and we've advertised it at the churches. I've sent a flyer to the Chamber of Commerce. We've sent, you know, they're all over the place, so that's just a good one to keep happening. And then in October, Mary Ellen has worked on, worked with AARP to do a two-part program, one in October, one in November, called Prepare to Care. And it's for family members who have older loved ones who need to, you know, some real, like, how do I do this? Because I never had to be my mother's caregiver before. So the meeting in October will talk about, you know, the things you need to take a look at, some of that. And then the meeting in November talks about finances, which is really important, because people's kids don't, I mean, you don't want to talk to your kids about your money. So, I mean, you don't. But yet, the thing is, though, if you become incapacitated, either mentally or physically, somebody's got to be paying the bills and taking care of stuff. So this is to help, you know, the family members work on getting, you know, getting things in order, making sure that people have all their, you know, trusts and wills and 401K, I mean, you know, get all that stuff put together prior to your, you know, getting sick, because afterwards, sometimes, and if you're, you know, if things aren't in a trust, or they're not done, sometimes, sadly, if your family member develops dementia, if a lawyer's worth his salt, he might not let a patient, you know, your mother sign a document if she has no idea what she's even signing. So those are the things you kind of got to, but this helps the family members kind of work their way into that, so.
Do you have dates for those?
Um, the Prepare to Care one is on, it's not Thursday, it's Tuesday, October 1st. And the November one, we're trying to work that in before the fair.
Who's presenting that one?
AARP.
Did you have to have the exact date in the fair?
Well, maybe, I'm not sure. Uh, November 23rd.
Thank you.
Also got the flower lady coming back for Thanksgiving. Shredding is on October 28th. We have some kids coming in, and, you know, this will all be in the newsletter, so you don't have to. We have some kids coming in from the Montessori school here on October 29th to do a Halloween program at lunchtime, and we're going to get them there.
Are they elementary?
No, they're little.
Oh, real little.
Wow, I think like, four, five, six. They're little.
Oh.
I'm excited about that. I have a man coming in on October 15th who's going to talk about happiness. And I've heard from a couple of my colleagues that this is a really good program, especially to do before the holidays start. So I thought that was a, that was a good, a good thing. I'm trying to think. Movies will be back on Fridays, since we're going to be here on Fridays. What else? What else? What else? What else? Crivage Bridge, Warmicube. The schedule will go back to the way it was prior to July.
When's your son coming for the AI?
My son is coming on Friday, September 20th at 1:00. He's happy, because while he sat in the airport in Las Vegas the last time, he got all those slides and stuff done, so he doesn't have to do them again. While he was sitting there being aggravated, he got all his slides done. And I said to him, you're not going anywhere before Donald?
No.
Good answer. Yeah, so.
I noticed Poppleton Senior Center had AARP, they had a whole seminar on social security, how to protect it, and the stats of the fund and all that. Can we get someone that can do that?
Yep. I'm also working on the Safe Driving Program too, get that done sometime in September, October. I'm just waiting to hear back from Helen with some dates, but, because that's another program, I mean, she takes 20, 22 people, it's always been full, so. And I always tell everybody, if you haven't taken that class, you should take it, because it's really good. So we're moving along. You know, the fair's coming up. There'll be a breakfast, a free breakfast for veterans here on Saturday, September 14th, sponsored by the Region Post. Our annual Veterans Luncheon before Veterans Day will be Friday, November 8th at noon time. And then, like I said, the fair is the 23rd, I think. That's the last date I went, I don't know, I have this. Well, I did, I know, I did two, but then they changed it, so.
Is it 24th?
23rd.
No, 23rd. And then, yeah, well, I did two, but then I was told, no, they changed it, so. And then on October 12th, the friends, the supporters, rather, are doing a, they're doing a Garrett Sam here, so that's coming up too, so.
What day was that?
Uh, October 12th. It's a Saturday.
It's a junky one, the whole day.
Oh, okay. I will mention that to them. I was going to say, it's also Columbus Day weekend, so.
You're going to tell people? I haven't notified the manager of the cell. Is someone else running? I don't know. They really haven't met this summer. They are meeting next Thursday.
Just took back and put stuff together, so. I'll tell them that you volunteered. Oh, no. Come on, Diane, after three years, you should be an expert.
Four years.
Four years. That's, I mean, now you're like.
By who's counting?
Yeah. Now you are the, the, the person. Something else that was not on the agenda tomorrow night, I've been asked to appear before the selectmen to give an update on the needs assessment and what we've done, what's happened, where we're going with some of it. I'm on the agenda for 6:55, I have 15 minutes. I sent them my slides. I'll talk fast. I'll be like the weather people on TV. Yeah, so that's tomorrow. So I'll be here until about 6:30, so. And you can watch me on TV if you're not, or I'm sure they redo the, they repeat the selectmen's meetings, you can find them online, so. And then last week, I submitted my official letter to the town about my retirement. My last day in the building will be Friday, November 8th. I'll be here for the Veterans Banquet, which makes me happy, because that's one of my favorite things to do. And then on Tuesday, the 12th, my knee's being operated on, and I'll be using my sick time. After I get more civilized and have a shower and get my hair washed, you're welcome to come visit anytime. Or call me, you can call me, it doesn't matter what I look like then. And then my last day, actually being in Hoida, will be December 31st, so. Oh, don't look so sad. I'm not going to, geez. I'm not going to run away forever. If you need me, you just call me. I mean, somebody else will take this job, and we'll be fine, and all will be right with the world, so. I promise.
Gate lunch, we have your promise.
Yes, I promise.
You're trying to accept.
I know, well, yeah. Don't ever say it in your, well, that's not how Elma did it, because, don't say it, don't say that, so. So I'm in the process of cleaning out my office, getting rid of some stuff in there, getting it ready for shredding on our, over to the eve. Yeah, so. getting it ready for shredding on October 28th, yeah, so, but, like I said, I'm back from, 16 miles from here in the house.
Oh, that's great.
Who does the interview then, for this, for your position?
So the town manager is the appointing authority, but typically with department head positions, we involve, particularly when they work closely with a body such as the council, we do involve members from the council. We, we don't have any of that determined yet, I mean, we know what our typical process is, but as Alma mentioned, we just got the letter last week, I was out, so, I haven't settled back to figure out a timeline of the process. But we'll certainly communicate that with the council, obviously, it's a position that you work very closely with, so we understand the interest and the concern.
Before we started our meeting today, one of the members of the council said to me, what happens if Alma retires and they haven't hired a new director?
Right.
Can we still meet?
Oh, yeah, you can still, yeah, yeah, yes.
What was your question, sorry?
No, can the council still meet in the business if I'm not here?
All right.
We just wouldn't have any information from the director, we'll make sure we have help. We would have to make an attempt to get that.
Just so you know, that is typical with department head positions, we don't often have it lined up that, there's, there's typically a period where there's either an interim or we put something in place. It's very rare that you have an outgoing department head, and then the next business day, you have a new person on board, so, it's, it's typical?
I mean, it's my intention to have everything, especially the big events, like Thanksgiving, delivery, the holiday party and all that kind of stuff, it's my intention to have all that stuff done, so, at least get you through till the end of December.
Have you heard any information about the town's Thanksgiving Day turkey dinner?
Not yet, it's coming.
Too quick.
Yeah, actually, yes, and I just want to thank you, I know that our meeting was originally scheduled for next, I mean, for last Monday, and in between then, I had the opportunity to fly down to Florida for a few days, because my little tiny adorable godchild turned 40, and we had a surprise party for her, and I was part of the surprise, because she opened the door and said, what are you doing here?
Nice welcome.
I said, I said, well, I heard there was a party, and she goes, okay, and then she like flipped her arms around me and whatever, she was happy to see me, but it was just like, what are you doing here? Because we, I had almost messed it up one day on Facebook, and I didn't, so, caught that, I'm like, I had to remind her, we also had beaches up here, so, so, but it was, it was a quick, it was a quick getaway, I got down there Wednesday night, came home Monday afternoon, and it was nice, it was a nice trip, and it's hot down there.
Amen.
I would not be moving to Florida when I could tell you, I can tell you that right now, so...
As a side note, I didn't know, if anyone knows that the Neighbor Brigade was in the advocate beginning of August, which we had discussed at a previous meeting, so it does exist.
Was it an embrace of what?
The Neighbor Brigade, we discussed that, we were talking about transportation issues and all the things.
Yeah, doing little chores and whatever.
Yeah.
I mean, I think one of the biggest things we have issues with is finding people.
The shovels, no.
Yes, everyone has an issue with that.
Yeah, except me, because I am the best neighbors on the planet, so...
The other thing is, this is my seventh month of doing minutes, is what's the status of the secretary, filling the secretary position, which is a paid position.
I'm going to, I'm going to defer to that.
So there's money that's sitting in the budget all year, but it's, what's happening?
Alma, we've had discussions about it, wanted to fill in it.
Well, I mean, I think the town wanted to take a look at maybe combining several of the, the board positions, and making it maybe a more fuller time job.
Yes.
But I don't know if anything's more fuller than that.
No, we're working on it, so...
Yeah, so...
As I, yeah, if somebody else would like to retake and try this for a while, take the minutes, volunteer.
See, if you didn't do such a good job, somebody else might want to do that.
Put all that money saved toward the community center.
Or to Diane.
Yeah. No volunteers, I'm the only volunteer?
Yeah, I can.
Alma's going to get her shoulder operated on, so she's going to sign all her important documents while her seniorship's still eligible.
That's right. I just made out a new medical directive, I had one from New Jersey, but I didn't know if it would be good here, so I got one from Massachusetts. I just gave it to my son, who's now out of the state, of course.
Of course.
And my surgery's on Friday.
Yeah, oh, that's all right. Now, my son maybe writes something in my handwriting that he eventually had tattooed on his arm, because, before I had my shoulder done, because he was afraid my handwriting would look the same after that, I think it still looks the same. Anyway, so...
Oh, I signed one, it is what it is, your ass said.
So, if anybody has any more questions or comments, or...
I have a comment regarding the secretary's position. If it's a paid position, why aren't we paying Diane?
Because I'm a volunteer, I'm a volunteer of the council, I can't debate.
That's why.
That's why. She could resign from the council.
Oh, yeah, then I'd have to find another person, yeah, you're just compounding all these problems here, so...
Who did Nancy do?
Yeah, but she wasn't on the council.
No.
She was a paid...
Oh, great, you guys, if you close this meeting, Karen can stop recording and we can continue.
Nancy was a paid employee. Are there any other items or issues to come before the board?
Well, my surgery is Friday, so I don't know when I will be mobile again, the many months before I can drive.
But we do have a week pass, you can come get me, it's been done, ask Nancy, ask Linda.
I use the bus a lot.
Yeah.
We wish you the very best.
All right.
No, not always.
Not always, no.
Depends how much pain I have to have. Well, I would like a motion base to move to adjourn for having a second...
This is Marilyn, Nancy, babe.
I...
Thank you.
We wish you the best, Marilyn.